Well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. And any additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Somebody wish to move the agenda as presented. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, adoption of the October 22 minutes. Paul moves it. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, the organizational meeting. Marna? Any question on Marna's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, that's not now. We have a recognition for... If you're on, if you want to come over here. For those that don't know, Ron, which probably is nobody, but if you want to kind of look at that.
Oh, I see you.
For nineteen years, dedicated service to our community. And you don't know how much is appreciated, Ron. Thank you very much. I know that you were probably here for probably five or ten years before. But we really appreciate all that you've done for our community. And I know that MPC will probably miss you for a while. And they'll probably be glad that you're not there sometimes. And then other days, they'll be wishing that you'd come back. Anyway, thanks again.
Oh, you're welcome.
On behalf of the town and council and all our community, it's just been great to have you participate.
You're welcome. It was fun. I enjoyed it. It was very informative. It kind of kept me involved in what was going on with the town and the community.
Well, we appreciate that.
Like I say, it was fun. I enjoyed it.
Yeah, and I know that you have different positions in there. I mean, did you ever wear your chair?
No, I just came and placed your chair.
That's good. Anyway, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meetings. If you'd like to stay, you're welcome to.
Don't, I'll keep my head home.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on. On the agenda, we have a gentleman here from Southgrove. So if you want to take the center pot seat there. Thank you very much for driving up.
My pleasure.
I know I wasn't that rich today, and coming home wasn't too bad. But going home might be a little bit dicey in a couple spots here where there's moisture ran across the road.
It's pretty dry right now on the way out, but hopefully we'll stay that way when we get back. Thanks for having me today. As mentioned, my name's Peter Castrell. I'm the executive director of the Southgrove Regional Initiative, where I've been there for nine months now, taking over for Pete Lovering, who was the previous manager at Southgrove. I know many of you knew Pete. I'm putting faces to names around the room as I look at everybody and get to know folks. I've met Michelle and Lorna, of course, before, and Kim too. But it's nice to be here. Thank you. I was given a mandate by the Board of Directors back in the spring to try to do seventy, to get seventy-five percent of our members every year to give an in-person report. There was this sense that communication was a bit lacking on what we're up to, what we're working on. And the board really wanted to improve that, to make sure that our members understand what taxpayer dollars are going towards. We made a few other changes to enable that kind of communication. For the last, for as long as Southgrove's been around, since 2004, the board has been ten individuals drawn from the communities that are members of the organization who would serve on the management board every year. And we moved to a new system that we're trying out this year, where every community appoints one person to serve on the Board of Directors with a mandate to attend four quarterly meetings throughout the year. So not a huge commitment, but making sure that every community is there at least four times a year around the table, seeing what's being done with taxpayer money on this file. And then those Board of Directors members elect a five-person executive who are committed to council, who's from the region, who are specifically committed to working on regional economic development. So that's going on right now. Laurie Lookman from Volcan County is one of our five execs. And actually, I found it to be very, very useful to have these five folks who are doubling down on the economic development profile. They're very engaged, and it's been nice to be able to have more bodies to contribute, since there's only me and a part of members who works along with me to work on the file. So Southgrove is the Regional Economic Development Alliance for this part of Alberta. We try to coordinate the efforts of all the communities within our region, of which there are twenty-six now who are members of Southgrove, towards, working towards common prosperity, to keep the economy and the quality of life as good as it possibly can be, and to improve it, so that our kids and our grandkids can enjoy the same quality of life that we've all been able to enjoy here in Southern Alberta. You can go ahead. Oh yeah, sorry, Kim, I'm not giving you directions on where to go here. Can skip down to the next one there. Since 2004, when we were first incorporated, Southgrove's been involved in dozens of large-scale studies and reports that can continue to inform investments in the region. Our work tends to be less of the actual smokestack chasing, actual chasing businesses to put into towns, and more of the enabling piece. So we do a lot of the background work that enables your local economic development staff and your town staff to go out there and land new business, or to encourage your local business owners to grow and improve and expand their own businesses, to give them the confidence they need to create connections and create opportunities with the region. So we provide development tools, large-scale studies, as I mentioned, training sessions for councillors and staff. And since 2004, there's been tens of millions of dollars leveraged for regional projects, and tens of millions of dollars of external investments secured into Southern Alberta because of the efforts of Southgrove. An example of that is, so right now, our funding model is that we receive a hundred thousand dollars every year from the provincial government, and we receive a per capita thirty-five cents head from all of our communities. So it's not a lot of money to run an organization on. But the value of the projects that we are leveraging right now is over three million dollars off of that little bit of money that we are based off of. And our annual operating budget is just under half a million. So we've been able to do an awful lot with an awful little. So this is a report on last year, which was mostly under the direction of Pete Lovering, the 2017-2018 year. This is just a list of the various projects that we were involved in. One of the big highlights of the 2017-2018 year is that Southgrove waded heavily into foreign direct investment for the first time, along with some of our partners. One of the other REITs over to Southwest, based out of Pincher Creek, and the city of Lethbridge, and the county of Lethbridge, which really doubled down financially as a partner there. We sent delegates over to China, who built connections with our sister county, one of the sister counties over there, Lethbridge County. And they toured around and met something on the order of about a hundred different business representatives, and started building connections. This year, our foreign direct investment efforts have continued to grow and accelerate. We've applied for new grant programs through the federal government to build on the success of that, those initial contacts that we've made, and try to identify specific investment and business growth opportunities that we can then market or write. But foreign direct investment is only a small piece. The renewable energy piece is also of note. Renewable energy in Southern Alberta, as you can well appreciate, is going game busters right now. There's tons of opportunity out there. And our focus has switched from just doing promotion of the region to, oh my goodness, there's more investment that wants to go into Southern Alberta than we can actually hook up to the grid. So how do we help enable businesses that want to come and put an investment in to get the hookup done? Enabling the actual connection to work. And that involves a lot of bashing our heads against the wall of ASO and Fortis and the provincial governments, and some of the exciting work that's going on there. And another thing that really kind of moved into the spotlight last year with the decision of the federal government, the supercluster funding, is the Protein Innovation Canada supercluster that's now taking shape, and was launched officially at the beginning of October. So there's a growing industry in Southern Alberta that's going to be focused on the production of plant-based proteins. The actual processing of the crops that we already grow right here, the immense amount of crops that we grow, the immense amount of potential we have for improving and increasing that production, and actually processing that into commodities that are marketable, both here domestically and around the world. And that looks like a lot of external investment coming in, companies that are interested in setting up and expanding operations that already exist elsewhere here. And it's also an opportunity for existing business persons here to branch out in a new direction and get involved in something that's exciting.
Thanks, Kim.
Tangible returns. So just a few of the actual takeaways. Some people ask, well, you know, you do all this like kind of background work and stuff, but what do we actually see the Southgrove as? So your staff's going to be contacted very shortly. We've got this big Townfolio profile for Volcan set up. For all our members, we struck a deal with a company based out of Saskatchewan called Townfolio that does market data and investment profiles for communities. And they do it quite well. And we got that deal signed at the beginning of October. And they are just finishing taking the pre-generated profiles that they make for every community and improving them now that we've paid for them. And the next step is to reach out to all the staff and connect, and start doing the training, and get it integrated into everybody's website. So there's also the community business retention expansion marketing plans, I'm sure handed out last year, the community broadband reports, and our new grant-ready program that we'll talk about in a minute.
Next one, Kim.
This is just a list of different research projects that are informing investments right now that we've got on the books. You can browse them at your leisure on our website. The water for economic development there is, I think, the most significant one. When companies come along and they want to get access to water licenses in Southern Alberta, sometimes this is a dicey thing. But back in 2009, Southgrove negotiated a deal with the irrigation districts, such that the irrigation districts all agreed that they would apportion water for new projects that create economic development for the region. So that agreement exists because of Southgrove's work. And we can go out and we can get those water licenses for new businesses. This is a list of our current strategic plan and the main projects that I'm working on. It doesn't encompass everything that we're working on. It's just the things that were written into the plan in the spring. It's ambitious, especially for our staff capabilities, but we're an ambitious group of people. The one I wanted to highlight there is our most recent study that we put in applications, grant applications to secure. And it's a cost-benefit analysis for rural broadband deployment. The idea being that, listen, everybody tries to make the case for rural broadband deployment and the economic thought that comes out of it. But nobody's done this study. When we started searching around this summer and looking to see if anybody had done this, nobody had. And the first study was released for the state of Indiana back in September. And it was extremely interesting. The numbers that they returned on it were like, oh, here's actually some interesting data that says that this pays society back in terms of GDP growth in terms of economic return to the entire region. So we've put together a project now in concert with a couple of professors from the University of Lethbridge to do a study for the entire province of Alberta. And we've reached out to a whole bunch of different corners to get it funded. And we're hoping to have that fully funded by January and off to the races. We developed, also, a conversation with policy people from Economic Development Trade up in Edmonton. So they are excited about the project as well. And we're hoping it influences their policy as they said. All right, next one. So our new grant-ready program that we just got signed. So we have hired a company that we worked with before, Calvary, who is going to be putting out a grant report that we're going to send out to all of our communities every single month that basically lists, here's all the different grant programs that are available to communities in Southern Alberta right now. And as they get to know each of the staff members, like the chief staff contacts from new different towns, they're going to be able to refine that grant report for your community a little bit better. Now, the report is free. We're paying for that from Southgrove. And if you want to pursue one of these grants, you can either do it yourself, or if you don't have the staff resources, you can hire these folks to do it. They're professionals at a preferred rate. They're giving all of Southgrove members a twenty percent discount for their services. Now, obviously, the thing that's in for them is they also do the after-work as well. They do project implementation, they do project design. And so if you want to strike a deal to hire them to do the bigger projects that they really make their money on, they're available to do that too. Good folks, though, they helped us store a strategic plan in the spring and they've done other projects for Southgrove in the past. Plant-based protein, I mentioned before. Listen, this is probably the biggest market opportunity that's available in Southern Alberta right now. That includes Volcan and Volcan County. If you don't know what I'm talking about, plant-based protein is where you take peas or you take lentils, and you fractionate it down, you put it through an industrial process, and you actually pull the protein out in a powder form, either liquid or a powder form. And now that can be put as an ingredient into any other kind of food out there that you want. Actually, fractionating the raw crop is an awesome business opportunity. Actually, taking the protein that you pulled out of the crop and putting it into a food product is an awesome business opportunity. There's real opportunities for folks, you know, clever, creative entrepreneurs who look right here in Volcan, to pursue industries that go into this. And the basic trend that's underlying this whole movement is that by 2050, the world demand for high-quality food is going to grow by about seventy percent. And that comes along with a massive increase in the global middle class. Folks in all of East Asia, India, China, the Koreas, and various other parts of the world are getting into the global middle class, and they want high-quality processed foods like you and I enjoy. So you talk about market share increase, and you talk about an area that's in a position to grab some of that share, that's us. So we're going to be working heavily on that. I'm sure Lorna's sure with you some of the stuff we're doing already. Opportunities revolving specifically. I tried to sit down before I come and do these things and talk and scratch my head about what are some real opportunities for a town like Volcan? Obviously, renewable energy and the plant-based protein that we've already talked about are real opportunities. It's not just something that Volcan County can benefit from. But of course, if Volcan County gets a huge new project out in the rural region that gives them a lot more linear assessment, that does benefit the town. Because a lot of that money ends up flowing into the town as the regional service center, right? Insect protein processing. Here's something that you don't have to have a massive facility in the country in order to do. Plant-based protein is growing, but also insect protein. These folks thrive by being able to access organic waste as an input cheaply, which we have a ton of around here. And then being able to sell to feed producers. This isn't just for human consumption. That's kind of a growing side piece. It's mostly for animal feed consumption. So we have cheap inputs, and we have near access to feed producers. So if one of your local folks wanted to jump into this, they just need a giant warehouse someplace in your industrial sector here, and they're off to the races. Air servicing industries, obviously. Volcan is well positioned to continue to do this. I was looking at some of the data about Volcan before coming up. And Volcan, when I look at the towns that are in Volcan County, a lot of them have sustainability issues. We see just trends changing. But the town of Volcan itself, I'm not so worried about long-term sustainability for. A lot of the villages might unfortunately eventually disappear on us. But the geography of the region is that it's so wide and vast that they do need a service center, and Volcan is that service center.
Yeah, be careful when you tell that the other ones that.
I know. Well, I've had some hard conversations with some of the folks who live in the other ones. Yeah, yeah. But, you know, the population here is aging. But you still have a strong family-based population as well, with really, really, a fairly high average income in households. And you have a really, really diverse industry base here as well, which says to me, service center. It's not a town that relies on the rise or fall of one particular industry. You are servicing a large geographic region. So I'm not too worried about that. Broadband-enabled service-based businesses, you have great broad up here. That's fantastic. As some of your young entrepreneurs start to figure out the opportunities that are variable there, there's opportunities. Look what happened in McGrath with that massive insurance industry that was just domestically grown. And now they employ a hundred people in the little town of McGrath who are making really good money, and they're working all over the world just off their computers. Regional airport developments. I know the airport's small, but there are definite opportunities, especially when you pair the ability to ship goods quickly out of Volcan with some of the other growing industries, such as the plant-protein industry there. And event tourism. I've always, I love Volcan. And I've always thought that with the right energy and the right inspiration, it could become massive. I mean, if you pair it into like a music festival as well, and it really captured the imagination of the younger crowd, yeah, there's opportunities there. The new Cocacello. And urban French partnerships as well. One of the new trends, of course, that I'm sure that you're all aware of is partnering with the county that surrounds in order to put up new industry and attract new businesses, and the sharing the business growth that comes out of that as well. So there's just a few of the ideas. I think that's the last slide, is it, Kim? Yeah. So the year ahead is basically marked by incredible opportunity. The problems that we have at Southgrove right now are good problems. There's more opportunity than we can chase with what we have available. We are doing the absolute best we can. Southern Alberta is set to boom. Volcan's kind of on the fringe of where a lot of that growth is happening. That doesn't mean they can't benefit from it. You have the advantages of being able to offer certain specific access to certain kinds of crops that are growing regionally. And it's just an adverb, imagination, in order to take advantage of the large-scale trends. So you see Southern Alberta booming at least up till 2050, when we might face water issues. But if I was going to push one message home for you to take away, it's that the future right now is really, really, really bright. I mean, you just look at the population boom that's kind of occurred down closer to Lethbridge, and the towns that surround Lethbridge in their quarter are out of its favor. A lot of those towns have grown by thirty percent over the last six, seven years. It's incredible. Well above the national average, and sustained economic prosperity through boom and bust. I'm happy to take any questions to my house, but it's good to be here. It's good to put faces to names, and I really, really like this job, and I like working for all of you. Thank you.
Any questions? When you talk about the fringe, you know, we've always felt that. And we feel it from all the organizations that we do belong to, especially ones from the south and ones to the north. Either we're too far north or we're too far south for a lot of the organizations. So we feel like the orphan, you know, whether it's Southgrove or some of the other ones that we have belonged to for the years. It is sometimes a hard sell for us to see that. And sometimes it's our own fault, because we don't get involved in the, on the boards. And so sometimes, again, if you're not there as a push and a shaker, sometimes you are the chaff that falls out at the very end of the combine. You don't go into the hopper at all. So again, you know, it's nice to hear that you've got, you know, some visions to try and bring us organs back out into the pack and make us feel more welcome. The other one was on broadband. I did get a text message from Mayors and Reeves about, there is a survey out there. It's, I assume it says, "High-speed Internet Services Survey is Competition for Rural Canada." So I assume it must be a federal survey that they're asking for. So I'm not sure if you guys are in touch with that or not.
Yeah, we just shared that one around in last week's newsletter.
Yeah, Jill just sent it for Mayors and Reeves. I haven't hooked on to it yet to see what it's all about. But I know that Bernie from down in Coleman, no, not Coleman, down in Waterton, he's a big believer that, you know, the broadband is going to be the, you know, panacea of a lot of small communities. And I think there's a lot of communities that haven't seen any advantage at all that wasn't there, other than, you know, the speeds have helped out. A few people that have already been using some source of, you know, but it hasn't increased their numbers. I mean, the McGraths and some of them that have seen other businesses come to fruition are, I think is one thing, but I don't think we have really seen huge, huge, you know, numbers in our community.
No, but if you don't have it, it will kill the community over time.
Well, I agree. But the bad thing about a lot of communities that, you know, like the Olds as an example, that went up and spent their, you know, fourteen or sixteen million of their own dollars, you know, feel kind of, again, like the orphan child that was told there's not going to be any money there, so do it on your own. Now, everybody's pulling up to the trough to get the funds from the provincial and federal governments to hook broadband, you know, high speed into your community. So, you know, I think there are going to be ones like that, the Olds, especially when, you know, people say, well, if it's in your community, they're going to support your community, and on and on. Yet you find that people talk with their pocketbook, and they can save two cents by going from Tellus to Axiala, back to Shaw, to whoever their supplier brought in in their community. They'll do it, the loyalty, you know. And Olds honestly thought that there was a ton of loyalty there. And even if you talk to Bernie from Waterton, he believes there was a lot of loyalty there. But when they started investing that money, people talked with their pocketbook. And it is a tough one. And so we were fortunate, you know, it didn't cost our municipality a pound. I mean, we tried to put high-speed internet in, and, you know, we invested four or five hundred thousand dollars into high-speed internet that is not even there at all anymore at all. And, well, I think it was probably double that in the end, but, you know, but anyway. It's just that, you know, sometimes, you know, the panacea of something, you know, is there. So, but anyway. Any other questions for Peter? Well, thank you very much for taking the time to come up, and we appreciate the time you've spent.
Thanks for having me. And if anybody hasn't signed up for our newsletter, it is the best economic development newsletter in the province. Just because I'm the one saying it doesn't mean it's not true.
Well, thanks again, and would you want to stay, or if you really want to head off?
I've ejected that thumb drive, so you can pull it up.
Just pull it up.
Awesome, you're ready? Yeah, I'm probably going to.
Yeah, no.
Thank you so much. It's a great meeting, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Take care.
Yeah, thanks again. Okay, moving on to the agenda, number five-one. Recurring grants and organizations. We kind of semi-spoke to this when we were requested to do some funds. And so here's a couple examples of a couple organizations that have fulfilled their mandate of supplying the information that's needed to qualify. Any questions on any of those, or?
They produced a mistake on their statement of financial position.
Which one?
For Rainbow Lyracy. I mean, that's for the picks. Just, I'm just being picky there, comparing 2018 to 2018.
Yeah, I saw that too, the first.
Yeah. I just hope that this is just a typo.
Yeah.
Well, they've been signed off of those, but.
Well, it's just on the one page. The second page is right.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the rest are right, but they probably should. Because if they have to send that in, they might get caught on that.
But it's nice to see that they're supplying it so we got stuff to do.
Yeah, because you've added it to the policy, and we've included it in the 2019 operation budget. This is more for your information, knowing that they have asked you to like to see changes to it.
Okay, any questions on either one of those? We don't need a motion.
No, you can receive everything, the regulation, if you'd like.
All right, moving on to the Volcan tourism appointments. So we have one from Volcan County that has come in. And then the one from Chamber Combers.
Have we had any?
We've had some members of large inquiry, yes.
Okay, any question on either one of those two? No, we'll move on to the Farm Safety Smart story, or the... Requesting some funding.
They annually make this request, and to date have haven't funded it yet.
Okay, any questions? Paul, you have a card?
Yes. Didn't we just look at one from another organization not too long ago? Similar?
Very similar, yes.
I said no.
Okay, no questions, we're moving on to the Highway 320 Development Association. And again, this is, I believe, the second time they have asked. They have, there's a list of the ones that participate, and then a list of ones that they have gone after that don't participate.
I think I read somewhere that, was it the city of Mendonhat and the city of Lethbridge aren't really standing behind this?
They belong to the community. I...
Yeah, I sort of read something in here that...
The index to Townsville.
City of Lethbridge, you know, allows them to host it, the meetings at their facility for free.
I hear that's on the next part, because I remember leaving that as well. It may have been mentioned in their strategic plan. They give regular presentations at Mayor's meetings.
Yeah, there's three or four that belong to this that come to, like, from Pincher Creek and Port MacLeod, and Coldell. All speak on it if they're... And I found it kind of interesting because the, they're asking for Waterton to participate and yet Bernie always talks about being a mean. So.
Yeah, we are rather on the fringe.
Again, we are definitely, I mean, if you spend most of your time going north, you have an opportunity to travel Highway three. If you have family or reasons to go south, you know, you have, you don't travel three to get to it partway. So, any thoughts, comments before we move on? Okay, then we'll move on to the Twin Valley Water Commission budget. Unfortunately, they did do a comparison, so if you didn't have last year's budget.
And I just, because of the, because of how the budget went last year, I just put in the bylaw stuff that, so that, so that we're actually following the process. That thirty days, if you do want to make a comment, Paul has had an opportunity to go through the budget with. And Kathy and I have also gone through it with her as well, so we can, I can answer any questions.
Basically, there's no change in your rates.
Again, if I wouldn't, if I didn't have last year's, I wouldn't have a hot food. I mean, which, I mean, I know that you guys go there, but to me, when I read this, it's a waste of piece of paper. You know, the numbers look great, but what do I have to compare it to if I don't pull up last year's? And so that would be one comment I'd make, and I don't mean it as a total negative, but, you know, again, if I was a commission member, I'd be saying the same thing. That disappointment because it was not a comparison we made either.
I have to ask, what ACFA old and ACFA new Southers?
Those are the old Alberta Capital Finance Authority loans that were, when the commission was formed. They assumed the vouchers for the old water treatment plant that the town had. So they took, that's what the CFA old is, is the old loans and the new ones are loans that they took to, to finish the project.
Okay.
I have trouble with acronyms sometimes.
So do I, you know, and then.
Sometimes, all the time.
There's too many acronyms out there.
You know, and then the same with the Y E transfer.
I assume that's year end, but.
Yeah, I assume so too, but again, it's just, it's just an assumption. And again, maybe they're, in the one that goes to the authority, to the members, they have more detail, but.
We're just wondering about it here.
Where?
Sorry, I didn't.
This is what was provided. Yes. So.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions? But you guys have read it over and you say that it's a status quo.
Yeah, there's no rate changes and there's actually a small decline to administration fees, so.
What, what about our, our, meaning from the ten percent or, you know, for water?
We, and that's why they do it interim as well, is because until the end of the year, we don't know about, with our ten percent for two thousand and eighteen. So, so we won't know until after January.
Because, because that, that potentially is another hit.
Could affect it, yeah. By looking at our numbers, the heat from the summer, we're okay.
Okay.
So this budget, it just says two thousand and nineteen budget, I assume from January first to December thirty first?
Yes.
Yeah, they run on Calderade?
Yes.
Okay.
They follow a very similar process to approving a budget. We do, they do it interim.
Okay.
And then when they get all their numbers after the year end, they do an amendment to bring it in line.
Yeah.
And they follow the same process that we do. It makes it a lot harder because nobody has a final budget till.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's understandable. I mean, and same with year-to-date too, I mean.
You saw it in our budget as well.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments, questions? This one here, I suppose, we all need it.
You just receive it for information, yeah.
Awesome, proceed with this information.
Okay, so Jordan, any moves, all the corresponding items, one to five?
The, sorry, if I, if I will, if you did comment on it, you could do a motion to have administration inquire. But because you're just receiving it for information, you can receive all of it.
Okay, was there any other comments, questions? Okay, here and done, all in favor? All right, moving on to current business, six one. Hide your mic.
Buy it.
It just do, Kathy.
Well, yeah, there's, just so that you're all very aware, this is all the information that we can provide. It is, there is someone else looking at it. We're hoping that we can get it, but. It's a, it's more of a timing thing. We're, we're going to make as quick of a move on this as we could.
Okay, can I make a motion to?
Yes, I'm actually going to let them know right after we meet it, but there's another company going to look at it tomorrow that have their name in the first, so.
So somebody should go over it for tonight, flat the tires?
For, for the lack of this being on camera, it's, they're hoping that they will start to negotiate on price. At this price, we're, we're asking what they're asking for, or we're paying what they're asking. So if they do negotiate on price, then we will have a better offer. But if they take it for what it is, they were the first one to, to say that it would take it, so. It's hard to compete against private companies when it comes to that, though. Having said that, you've seen all the prices of new units.
So if not, Stu will do that.
Stu will be coming back in the capital budget here fairly, one of these days.
Okay, so Paul moves that we proceed with six one.
Purchase?
Purchase.
With expenditures.
The text will go as soon as you let me go, so.
Okay, any comments on Paul's motion? Here and done, all in favor? It's Karen, thank you. Okay, moving on to the draft operating budget summary.
So everyone had a chance to look, uh. Go through the summary very quick. To be completely honest, if you go right to the very bottom, where a hundred thousand dollars difference, a hundred thousand dollars. The revenue was split in different areas, mostly in the split with the county. For, and the expenses of a hundred thousand were the addition of the project manager for Vol. So the rest of the categories, when you went through the detail, you'll see where all of the minor changes were. I'm more than happy to go through the details with you. The summary is basically just as like Tom says, you can see where you are year-to-date. What you budgeted last year, what we're budgeting for this year. We kept the numbers for our taxes at the same assessment and the same tax rate. Makes it simple for you because that way, if you pass that budget and the assessment changes or, then you could do, change the tax rate to make up that difference.
Did, did, did they talk about anything about the assessment changing much at all?
iPhone Brian, just as a heads up, and he said that there has been very little growth, but it's also, hasn't seen much fluctuation in pricing. Like it's, this year's helped really fairly significantly, so.
Just as a question that's coming up, like Kim said, if we keep it a status quo, theoretically, if things haven't changed much on assessments, then we shouldn't have to play around much with the low rate. But if assessment.
That would be nice.
If it feels like there is a change, so then we're going to see either if we keep the budget at status quo or areas of, of concern of where we can cut.
So to go through, that was the summary. Like I said, the summary is basically what you see on a month-to-month basis anyway. So you basically know where we're at to the end of October. So if we go into the detailed report, that's where, if you do have any questions, I can, I can go through this. And it basically does, you know, where the nuts and bolts are being spent. Things of, that'll catch your eye right away, you know, a five thousand dollar drop in council other expenses, that was your jackets coming out of there. We made an adjustment now that we know your committee commitments, as it was a new, new, some new counselors on there. We didn't know how the committee points were going to be distributed and the amount of time that people were going to be spending. So we've readjusted those, to bring those in, in line administratively. There isn't, isn't very much of a change. Of course, the, the one point eight percent salary increase that you'll see across the board through the majority.
With Champion pulling out of Food Bank, does that change anything?
No, that's, they pay for their portion and the province pays the others, so we'll see. You see, when we get to FCSSS, you'll see our revenue dropped a little bit.
Yeah, it wasn't like a ton though, was it?
It wasn't. Twelve thousand, I believe, from the province is what goes to Champion, so.
But it'll just be for the FCSSS, not the Food Bank?
FCSSS.
Food Bank, so.
Right.
Stand corrected.
No, I just, I mean, correct you, I just wanted you to know.
We left the emergency services at the fifty-five hundred and that's for the, some of that work on the regional.
Correct.
Emergency management plan, we're trying to put together. Those were the wages we used to pay for, or the, the we used to pay for wages. Now we're going to use that to update the plan. Yeah, like I said, you can spend a lot of time on this. We, you can see one of the big changes in the bylaw enforcement is the vehicle lease. We are at the end of the lease on that vehicle. We're going to keep it in the, in the leasing company's name because that way they'll sell it when it's reached the end of life. But this is basically our free year on it. We're, we're already paying administrative fees on it, which are about a hundred dollars a month.
You don't think it's worth buying out?
Because it was the first time, they did it for a four-year term and with the amount of miles we put on, on the vehicle, it's looking more probably a six-year term. Be better amortization for us. We paid a little bit more and advertised it out quicker and we didn't wear the vehicle out, so.
That's why I wonder if it would be better to buy it out.
We looked at the, at the buyout and we, we will have it advertised right out. Problem with buying it out is that you have to sell it yourself rather than, the leasing company will bring it back into their fleet. Sell it and they'll like credit your account with that, with whatever they sell it for.
Yeah.
There, there was pros and cons to both sides.
And did you do the number or something or?
We, Janice and I both talked to the leasing company and yeah, there's pros and cons. One of the biggest things with leasing is not having the asset in your books, as a depreciated asset. If it's leased, it's not yours, so. He said, and of course, that's bigger. He, one of the guys that I talked to, on their reference, City Calgary, places like that, if they don't, if they lease them, they just become an operation budget thing. If they buy them outright, they have an asset that they have to depreciate, so we don't look at it that much on that side, but.
So with the unknown about the tourists and how the committee is going to run it, I see the expenses are still at three hundred and forty-two thousand. Will that change possibly?
For the tourism?
Yeah.
You jumped ahead quite a way there.
Well, I know, but I have a question. Well, if I don't ask it right away, I don't remember.
Yeah, let me get to it.
So you have to, then we can go back and I'm fine. I already got it written down here.
Okay, so, so yeah, so what we did is we brought the revenue back to more of a realistic where we feel. The forty thousand for Vulcan was something that was taken out of the society's budget. When we looked into it further, there's not actually only one year that they ever actually had a revenue of forty thousand, so. We're going to go back the other way. We know that we should be able to bring in about ten. So we put the revenue down there and then it, and for the merchandise that we have at eighty-eight, we felt was a lot more reasonable. And then there was some grant funding that we know that we're going to be, that's going to be available. So yes, so expenses, we tried to hold on as, as tight as we could. To where we were.
Okay, just curious, now we can go back? Thank you.
It, it, it was a really hard one because the very first year was like, I'm not going to say guess, but it was a, trying to take society's numbers and old town numbers and try to come up with. And Vulcan was the one that we really fell down on as far as revenue, so totally wanted to make sure to identify that. You get into common services, you'll see from year to year, Stu flops around in, in between the pickups and a few of the equipment in there. You'll see it'll go from two hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars. That's basically when they put a set of tires on a truck. And they basically move it from one truck to another through the years. The more you see this, the more you'll get used to it floating around. Stu was able to keep the majority of his budget at less than last year, funneling a bunch of, moving a bunch of money to streets and different places. So his overall, of all the departments that Stu's responsible for, are within a thousand dollars of where they were last year. But he moved into different categories for different, streets is a, is a, is a very big one. You'll see he went.
Almost a hundred ninety thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's year-to-date, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's where we are. His, his big ones, he took out quite a bit out of the sand and gravel. And you'll see all of this water, all of the money that came out went into his water program. Water treatment is straight in now. That's the operation, contract operation of the Water Commission. Storm hasn't, was a change in wages, FCSSS, you can see the difference in the revenue there, Paul. From a hundred ninety-nine to a hundred eighty-six. Cemetery. Holding revenue, the same expenses are down a little bit. We're not going to be doing any sidewalk maintenance out there. We're laying in new sidewalks. We figure, figure we have enough for the next couple of years. Development planning stays very close to the same subdivision. Till we know what happens with the previous estates. Where, you'll see it went up a little bit, but we, until we get into, they actually do production out there, we won't see the large income off that yet. The economic development, we held the same. Recreation, the majority of the changes in recreation income are from the, the town or the county's contribution. One of the big changes is, you can see here, programming other. Reasons why it's in other this year is Bonnie Clanson holding a five K. That is supposed to be a fairly big event. It's going to have entries and they're looking at it this summer as a very large event. Bring in almost eighteen thousand dollars, but there'll also be expenses fairly close to that. So we wanted to, she asked if they be identified as a, as their own line item in the budget for this year to see, to make sure that the committee could, can evaluate how successful the program is.
But on that, the, the expenses went up by eighty thousand, but the income only went up by, so where was the other expenses in it?
So, oh, for, for the income?
On recreation, income was estimated at a hundred fifty-eight and expenses at two hundred forty-eight.
Yeah, only half, of course, only half comes from our county contributions.
Right.
So the increase from.
Inexpensive.
Yeah. So some of the areas that she had fairly large increases were, of course, that event. I'll show you it here. So that's program other. She had, we didn't have anything budgeted until it's up.
Fifteen.
Up fifteen. Up fifteen.
So there's still another seven thousand somewhere.
They went on here for supplies from twelve to twenty-two and that's for that amount coming up.
Oh, yeah, but there's only budgeted two thousand dollars in that category before, or no.
Okay, twelve thousand, they went, they went to twenty-two, so it was a twelve thousand dollar increase there.
Or ten.
Or ten thousand. And then, yeah, the fifteen that wasn't budgeted for. That's the majority of the change in the recreation. Bonnie is also going to present this at the joint meeting on Thursday. Thank you all for answering that email too. That was, came last minute while I was in Edmonton.
So on that, speaking of that, we're gonna do, go right from one to the other, right?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be here, so we'll, we'll just go straight through from that to the pool. Just a break hopefully. The V M M P, uh, there's a thousand dollars difference from last year. The pool, uh, there's an increase in revenue, but of course, that's the revenue from the county to pay for half of the project manager. And the change of a hundred thousand is strictly the project management. Some line items changed, uh, within there, but very little. Repair and maintenance went down four thousand, but our, uh, uh, our chemical went up four thousand, so.
But yet that, um, anticipating that the pool's not gonna have as long a season, are they still anticipating that we're gonna have as good an income?
The, yeah, from, uh, because most of the swim, uh, we aren't gonna be canceling, uh, uh, swim lessons and those sort of things. Those are the, the major incomes. The public swim doesn't really give us that much because those are usually done at passes, so at the end of the season, they're, they're mostly all paid out.
Okay.
Big increase in the income was the county contribution.
That's what I figured, but I wasn't sure if they, if you did any calculations on loss, if we close a week or two early.
No, the arena, wanna know? Very close to the same library, again, it's the same water. Uh, you, this is the one where you can see that, oh, sorry, this is the tourist center.
Yeah, we already touched on that.
Yeah, I wanna get to the.
Sorry about that, Paul.
Water distribution has the biggest changes in the budget as far as expenses and, uh, contracted repair and maintenance from sixteen thousand to thirty-one thousand. Uh, repairs and maintenance from fifteen thousand to nineteen thousand. And then we have a category for valve repair down here that was fifteen hundred and leave up to sixty-five hundred. That's to do with Stu wanting to implement, uh, some new program changes because we're not doing, uh, infrastructure this year. And we're doing it every second year now. On the odd years, he actually wants to bring in a contractor and get some of the valves ready to actually save us some time and effort, uh, when we're doing bigger projects, so this is his effort in, in doing that. We all saw that the, some water breaks go very well and nobody knows and other water breaks don't go as well. Shut down three or four blocks for half a day, so. This is something that he would like to do inside that, but you can see. It didn't really change. About thirty thousand, but he grew that from other portions of, uh, of the budget. Sewer dropped five thousand. And the garbage, there was an increase in, in rates, uh, but the collection fee remains the same and. We're trying to keep that as close to balance as we can. Revenue that we bring in covers the cost of.
Water and sewer versus garbage, garbage actually balances.
Well, in four years ago it didn't. We've been slowly working our way to that. Uh, the most notable change for this is probably under administration where last year you transferred two hundred thousand. You basically got your contingency reserve up to two hundred thousand. We weren't able to put that amount of money back in for this year to, uh, uh, where we transfer reserves. Under administration, sorry.
Transfer.
Transfer to reserves. There, yeah.
Let's track for capital contingency.
Yeah.
Use pass the two.
I hope transfers. Right here, twelve, five, thirty-five thousand.
So there's nothing going in for function and re.
Right.
Contingency reserve.
So, and basically what we did is when we got the, the budget there, we put enough at your contingency reserve back down to a hundred thousand rather than the two hundred thousand because of course for a couple of years you kept it at a hundred. Because of the train tracks going in at a hundred and fifty thousand this year. Uh, if we could put it in completely in the budget, it would have unbalanced it by about a hundred thousand dollars, so we would have to propose a tax increase at this point. Really until you see if you have a surplus or not, that's probably one of the easy, that's where you took the money from last year to take it to two hundred thousand was from, uh, from the surplus, so I basically talked it back up to a hundred thousand where you'd like to maintain it and come time for surplus, that's when you can look at, uh, at, at bringing the contingency reserve back up. It currently has a balance of about sixty thousand, so.
The bad thing about that is one, more or less what happened to us with the CPR is that, you know, we knew it was coming, but we didn't know when and how much, you know? And so those are the only advantages to having a little bit of, of a cushion there, so. But, you know, to keep the taxation flat, anticipate flat, then we have to.
Stu mentioned that, uh, you can see right now, he missed a calculation in his and he sent this by an email this weekend, so, uh, he wouldn't have got a copy of it yet. Uh, this was talked over at thirty-five thousand, so he's anticipating fuel. If we have a lot of snow, we're, uh, he's gonna add another ten thousand dollars to the budget for it. And we, what we'll do is we'll pull that out of the, the money that's going into contingency to, to balance the budget back out. So when we do bring this for final approval, you'll see that, uh, because we're currently, as of October thirty-first, we are already eighteen hundred dollars over our budget last year, so he wants to bring that.
Same consolation, long-term forecast, I saw it in the states, warmer and drier.
That will help out a bunch, but that, that is one of the amendments that we'll make to the budget and bring it into balance using the money from the contingency, so.
But yet again, on the other hand, it's supposed to be a more severe winter than we had last year. So I'm not sure which dartboard we're watching.
Our equipment might be running.
This is the U S Weather Service.
Yeah, I just know that Farmer's Elmak is predicting a severe winter than last year.
And if you go by the dairies on the mountainous trees, it's a terrible winter.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. And I don't have room for arthritis, I don't know what my body's telling me, so.
It isn't moving in just yet, I gotta feel it.
So, so if you're happy with this, uh, what we'll do is basically you can receive this for information and, uh, direct administration breakback, uh, uh, draft for the next meeting. This was just to beat it up. If you have a bunch of changes you'd like to see, let me know. If not, uh, I'll bring it back for approval, it's just a summary.
We only have two needs to do.
That's right, so.
Yeah, is there any areas that struck a chord with anybody that anybody would like to question on, or?
I know one change we've made with our business is, uh, changing our telephone provider. Which cut our, our bill down almost fifty percent.
But we did that last year. Yeah, we put in, we put in brand new phone system last year and cut ours almost in half. And we're looking at, uh, some more efficiencies inside that with the fax. Now, we didn't switch over the fax and debit line because the new one was a, a new one. So we haven't, uh, completed those ones yet, but we're looking, uh, can maybe here next week to look at, uh, switching those ones over as well.
Like an actual fax machine, or like?
Yes, no, we still get faxes because we have to have four, uh, land titles.
But like, for, for real estate, I can send and receive a fax by my phone and I get it in through email and it's time stamp. And that, and it's much, it, just from my experience, it's much easier for sending it. That way there's more clarity when you send back and forth. It just saves, yeah, a few lots, but.
We don't send anything with our machine, but we still receive lots from our machine, so. And it's the other agencies that won't change at this point yet. Makes us panic when the line doesn't work, because sometimes we don't get a fax for two or three days. So, but we're looking at that.
Okay, okay, anything else, any?
So when we meet with, uh, about pools, um.
Airport.
Airport and, um.
Fire.
Fire, yeah. And will there be any changes there, do you think? And if so, do we just adjust here?
Yes, yeah, I don't think, uh, I don't anticipate any changes, but.
Okay, that's fine.
The county has had a copy of this recreation budget, uh, without the, uh, project management in it. They've had a, that for over a month. They asked for it at the end of September, so.
And, and the, the, uh, airport's pretty stable, it's not.
It's eight thousand.
And, uh.
Yes, they were all that easy in a note.
And, and the fire is very, very close from what you saw from our requisition.
Yeah, farther on, you'll see that the county has requested that they not do as many programs as they've done in the past, so.
Training stuff is.
So.
Budgets have been cut.
Been flattened or cut, so. That's a good question, anything else from anybody? Okay, if somebody wishes to move it as we just received.
Receive this information and bring back a draft to, and then to the next meeting.
Wow, and, and if there's something that strikes a chord, you know, definitely give Kim a hauler and, and you can, and Janice can look at it.
Now, when the county takes a week to go through their budget, do they sit and go line by line by line by line?
Yeah, like, like.
They sit down and focus on it.
But even, even that, even those lines, they go deeper into each line.
Really?
Anyone know how many times you changed your socks in the last one?
No.
Oh, okay, uh, but here's a. No, but I mean, they, they go into in depth, really do, I mean, they, they micro manage.
We assume our, our employees are doing their job.
Then they, you know, they micromanage each one right down to the, the nines to make sure that every, you know, cent and penny is accounted for and, which is their product.
I just wondered when they said they couldn't meet because they had a, a week-long budget meeting and I'm like, whoa, whoa. I know they, I know they have more money to spend than us.
Twice as much.
But still, it shouldn't take a week.
Well, like I said, you know, and, and they do, they, I, I think the county always has had that, um, process where they, they go into more detail than, than what we've ever. Again, you know, there's pros and cons to.
Ours is open to counsel anytime you guys wanna come in and, you guys all hold on, uh, to look at. Yeah, I don't, I don't even know how to answer that. We have a, this.
We have one method and they have another.
Yes, that's, that's right.
Yeah, that's probably the best way to put it, isn't it?
Yeah, our, ours is, ours is very open.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, again, if, if you folks wish to change it somehow, we, we definitely can. I, I just, um, you know, we used to have Janice come in too and, and we'd spend a little bit more time on it and, um, when you take a look, most of our numbers don't change a lot. I mean, unfortunately, the county has had a huge decrease in income too, so, but you know, theirs is gonna affect them on the assessment, that's. So, you know, they have concerns that they wanna spend more time on.
One of their big things that's different than ours is with their loss in, in revenue, they reevaluated their programs. So one of their big ones, like, yeah, everybody read the paper last year, they cut their road program down from ten miles to eight miles. They locked the salaries of their employees, they didn't hire so many summer employees. They, they, they go through, through their budget, their department heads put a lot more onto their counselors to make that call. You know, the department heads don't wanna cut ten employees or cut four miles of road. So they ask counsel to make that decision for them. That's what takes them a lot longer. If you start, because if they cut that, then where does that? And if you listen outside that recording, if you listen to the department heads from the county, they were all asked to cut seven to ten percent out of the budget. If you ask Stu to cut ten percent out of his, it would be two million of that budget, that's two hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's a lot harder than just moving money back and forth to buy fuel and, and doing a little bit extra paving or, so. So. I won't say that our process is simpler, but we're not putting as much on you guys as counsel to make those decisions because we're just basically using the same amount of money we had last year and.
Yeah, our numbers really aren't changing much and so. But again, if, if somebody has any questions, you know, definitely, you know, bring it to administration and, and.
That's why I gave it, gave you the detailed copy with all my notes this year to let you guys just have that blank slate. Because I kinda felt sometimes that if I put all the notes in for you, I tried to think of all the questions that were going to be asked. Doesn't allow you to, because a lot of times I've looked at these numbers so many times, somebody with a fresh look at it will catch one of the numbers there and ask that question and it's as good for me for you to ask that question as it is to already pre, have a pop, pre-populated answer in there for you.
I can't remember, did we raise the taxes at all last year?
Slightly.
Yeah.
We raised it a little bit.
They went, yeah, they went higher in the, in the industrial, but that was because of a change in, in assessment. It was the two years before.
Yeah, yeah.
You did, uh, point five and point five for a one mil increase over two years and then last year was the slight adjustment to get it back in line.
So probably next year we'll be looking at raising them a little bit again?
Depending on what it looks like here.
Yeah, it depends on how our assessment goes.
If the assessment goes up, you don't have to raise taxes. If, uh, it stays the same, then if you wanna add more services, then you have to raise. And there's really two, only the two things that you can do. Assessment goes up, you don't have to raise taxes. If the assessment goes down, you have to raise taxes.
Or, or cut programs, and you, you take a look at the whole list, you know, there's very, you know, some programs, if you cut much, the program's not there. I mean, they're probably, you could probably go through and say, well, I, you know, program A is not my favorite, but. But yet, might be somebody else's too, so.
The best way to think of it from a global is the assessment goes up, from a taxpayer standpoint, if the assessment goes up, your taxes still go up. If the middle rate goes up, your taxes still go up. At the end of the day, if you want. At the very last call, if you want this number, revenue to be the same as last year and your expenses to be the same as last year, then something has to, you have to cut either. That's where, that's where you have to start cutting, cutting your program. And that's where the county, again, you, you've all heard, you know, when they lose a million dollars in assessment, they have to find a million dollars in expenses to cut.
And unfortunately, you know, like the bottom three on that list, the water, sewer and garbage are toughest ones because they're all positions and assets are, uh, costs that's quite fixed.
That's where it's really nice when you look at this budget and you look at the, all, you, you saw the little manipulation that was done inside the budget to try to stay where, where the numbers are. The hundred thousand dollars there is straight that. The easiest way on, uh, on expenses is that, uh, project management. That's, you know, and that's something that wasn't in the budget last year.
I just can't remember if we raised it last year or not.
There was a slight increase, but of course, the assessment dropped in the commercials, so a lot of people in the commercial didn't see it make. So, yeah, if you wanna.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions, folks?
Should this vote on round or Lyle was making?
I know, I know Lyle made it. Um, any other questions? Hearing none, all the favor, it's okay. So we'll bring that back to the next meeting. It's okay. So we'll bring that back to the next meeting. And with any of the information that comes from the Thursday.
On Thursday.
Meeting. Okay, moving on to the the T V request.
I thank Karen for, and this is one of the nice parts about iCompas's. I got this email while I was in Edmonton at three o'clock on Friday. And sent an email to Karen and she was able to add it to the agenda. So the system works nice. I don't encourage people to start standing things at three o'clock on Friday.
So they're not asking for the road to be closed just to say.
No, and and I think the big one is is pulling the wagon with the SUV so that everybody knows that they have permission from the town to do that.
Oh, so it won't be horses.
It'll be an SUV.
I guess I just.
Who's uh ensuring that the.
Can I make that motion to to Edmonton?
Okay, George Lee moves to approve. Any any other questions? Thank you.
The one concern I have is clearance rates.
On the on the wagon itself, you mentioned that.
And Main Street is well enough lit. They shouldn't need it.
It'd be easier to put some lights on the wagon.
But if they have to, all they have to do is contact um Igorul, Daniel Igorul. He's got plenty to their outlets and.
Yeah, those lights on the back, yeah.
There's probably lots of them around, but I mean, he has a.
It doesn't do much.
Yeah.
I mean, it might not be hard, hard to stick it to the wood when it's a magnet. I'm sure there's ways around that, so. Okay, so George Lee moves to approve this one. Any questions on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? This is Carrie. Okay, moving on to the golf course minutes.
Waste commission.
Pardon me?
Waste commission.
Well, I have, oh, how did I jump? Oh, I put George Lee's name one farther down, sorry.
George Lee's already heard the.
Anyway, sorry about that, folks.
That's okay, Lorna jumps to the end too.
That's right.
Yeah.
So it's not just Lorna's fault.
I don't want to know anything about administration or any of that. I want to know what tourism's doing.
Well, it's kind of lost to my head, so I I didn't realize you were going with each one.
I'm not sorry to say that I haven't given it lots of thought. It was a good question.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any questions on this? This is the July twenty-fifth one. There has been one since, but it's, unfortunately, we don't get the minutes until the day of the commissions. And I think the only way we're gonna change that is to change staff.
Well, I know I'm writing one person on getting minutes to me in timely fashion. And you go two months between meetings.
I know.
And then they ask you to approve something. Do you remember what you did two months ago?
So anyway, any questions on the solid waste? Hearing none, moving on to the golf course. Any questions for Paul and Helen? Paul brings us up to speed fairly quickly and he also tries to bring in very fast. Anyway, we'll move on to the October Mayor's Reeves.
Were they just worried about the helicopter packs for the size of the helicopter?
Yeah, there was a concern and then the last meeting, because we sent a letter and haven't received anything back. It was a question asked and a couple of them still aren't that as big a concern. This is kind of a federal, you know, this is where the federal problems are kind of at odds. The trans.
Transportation is federal.
Yeah, for the aviation. And so, but that, you're you are right, the concern is the land in size is not big enough and not heavy enough for the bigger helicopter.
We probably never have a bigger one coming here, would we?
We have the biggest one that comes here, but it's it's more than that.
Our pad is that big.
So the last time it was upgraded, it was upgraded to the to fit the larger helicopter. So anyway, but yeah, so the, some of the concerns have been kind of dropped, but they still try and follow up with the letters that they sent off. Any other questions on the Mayor's Reeves? If not, Walton County CCR elder abuse October. Any questions on that one?
I know I had to look up what co-morbid is.
This lady runs quite a tight ship, doesn't she?
Her meetings are absolutely incredible.
That's what I've heard from a lot of people.
Oh, wow.
Oh, my God. It's amazing how she doesn't.
Accomplish a lot in a short time.
Okay, any other, no questions? Somebody wish to file like community reports? Paul? All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Okay, moving on to reports. Mr. Taylor.
Water Commission is the only one I was asked. And got the new rates. And I haven't got the minutes from it yet. But they are coming. Other than the rates, nobody really standard thing I think was the raise. Kate Kate managed your raise to try and bring her up into the twenty-first century. That's all I have to work.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Hearing none, moving on to Ms. Bolt.
I was at the Water Commission also. And I was at F C S S. They're looking at putting a new security system in that has cameras. Because they've decided that they need a new camera out by the youth center door. And that just look for a panic situation or something. They want that to be camered out there, so. We uh we changed our our policy to amend it where Champion is no longer part of us. So now it'll take five people with two of the five being elected officials on there to make one. So that'll be the new status for loaning there. And they're busy getting all their major programs underway and and stuff like that, but seems to be running pretty good. And I was also at the Red Board. Um, she, we're gonna put an ad in the paper for a member of large for the town to take a spot or one of the members that moved to B C. And that Aunt Tony gave us a book on Virginia Mitchell Park to look through it. And she wants us to talk to people out in the community to see how we can revamp that area up there. So if you have any suggestions on what you would like to see up there, how you think it would look better revamped in any way whatsoever. If you can either like email Bonnie or myself or whatever and give us, because we're open to all the suggestions we could get.
So is she sending out to, is it all the groups too?
Um.
Starting with committee right now.
Yeah, yeah, she gave us the whole big binder and.
No, I just, you know, like, I mean, there's so many groups that use it on a full-time basis. And I'm sure they would like to have some input before.
This is something that's kind of just starting in its valuable luxury of time. Maybe an idea, maybe if having another community engagement event, that we can really embark that into it and try and get as much feedback on that as possible and utilize it.
Yeah, yeah, because the more feedback that we can get for up there would be great. And I think everybody's kind of got an idea in their head what it would look like if it was better situated up there. So, no, all your feedback would be wonderful. Hearing that, so that's all I had was the Water Commission, F C S S, and the Red Board.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? And now, Mr. Magnuson.
I had no committee readings, so I had a report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on to Ms. Thomas.
I didn't have any meetings this last couple of weeks even.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roddy.
Um, on the twenty-fourth, um, kind of, we've been doing chamber, we, chamber meetings weekly. Pardon me, I can't talk today. With except for the Halloween week, just kind of getting everything organized and everybody's, you know, policies and all the administrative kind of stuff to take care of and get the board set up. And then also, that was addressing something like the minor Halloween no contests and stuff, but they had a line between the businesses and the county. And that was twenty-fourth. The twenty-fifth was Community Futures, which had a lot of the community updates and kind of really focused in all the organizations involved and what's going on. Kind of the biggest thing with Community Futures is the new program manager that's gonna be coming, which is very super exciting, very, very sad. It, but great, which I'm fantastic. But and then the twenty-ninth, the Victim Services. And that was mostly kind of updating from the R C M P and going back to dealing with the ongoing like updating and listening very, thinking very deep into the policies and making sure that that's all in line and updated and current. So that was one thing when they had the big term on the board is just. That the policies really desperately needed some attention, so. And then the twenty-ninth, Victim Services, or sorry, the sixth Victim Services, again, dealing with some contract policies and stuff, the staffing. November seventh, again with the Chamber, and that was kind of focused on the policy side. But as well as in December, they're just doing a, um, or sorry, in November, a social networking event in Milo, actually on the fourteenth at six P M. They need for their business members, which is kind of exciting, at the hotel there, six to nine. And, yeah.
Okay, any questions for Michelle? Hearing none, Lorna?
Um, I had the Marcus Foundation and we hadn't met since, I think, July or something. Been a long time anyhow. And I shouldn't say I hadn't been there because we were away at A U M A for a while. We had an election and Dick Ellis is the chair and Lori Leckman is the vice chair. Uh, we've been going over policies and we have a new super binder with everything in it, which is quite interesting. Get it all up to date. And we were looking at the budget. Uh, we had, I had a health and wellness meeting on October thirty-first. We're gonna continue our community conversations. They did Lowland and Champion. Milo and Airwood got canceled because of the storm and one hasn't been set for Vulcan yet or Carmigay. The gala was on November third and unfortunately, I was unable to attend it, but I think it was fairly well-attended and it was a tribute to Donna Graham, who was one of the founding board members. Uh, there's a fundraiser still going on for Valentine's Day, so see me if you need a ticket. And even if you don't, see me anyway. And it's, first prize is a hot tub donated by Furniture Villa. And second is accommodations for two at the Palisir in Calgary. And the third is a quilt made by Wendy Dendi and Lady Mark. Um, the operations manager, they're looking at doing up a new job description and looking to hire someone for Deb. Deb Paratun will be gone shortly, although she will stay and help out, so, I mean, I think if you don't just absolutely quit, people will keep hanging on to you. And that's great. She's good to help us out that way. On the second, we had a strategic planning all-day workshop with Ursula Sherwood from Community Futures came over and did it. She's, if we ever need a facilitator, she's excellent. And we had a teleconference call also last week. I don't remember what day.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. About the seniors housing, about the viability and feasibility. And then I was supposed to go to the subdivision and development appeal board this Friday, but I got a note or an email saying it has been canceled, so I'm reregistered for February seventh, so. Well, she said I could go to Evington and I just politely declined.
There's there's some other courses that have come up from municipal affairs as well.
Was there?
It'll get you a little sooner if you'd like.
Okay, well, I I just told her to re-register me for that, so. You know, I think that was all. No one else had things, but I had everything in the last week of the month, I think.
I have a quick question. You're through the Health Foundation. You guys have been doing meetings on communities. How was the attendance in the smaller communities?
I believe there were about fifteen or so in Champion. And I'm not sure of the numbers in Lowland. But that was the week that we had the horrible snow. And so the fact that even people turned up, that was, that was really impressive. So we are gonna continue on that and so we'll get another chance to get out to those communities and maybe better weather, we'll see a better turnout.
Oh, you mean them at the community the size of Champion.
Oh, yeah.
That's a great.
Well, that's what I thought. I was quite surprised. And Lowland, I think, was maybe only about five, but it also was not a really great day, so.
That's awesome.
How much are the tickets, Lorna? Oh, just the tickets.
That that you're buying for me?
Yeah.
Ten dollars each. And I have books if you need.
So if I buy one of each, I could win all three?
No.
I'm not sure, no.
But if you bought three, but but three, you have, you increase your chances?
Chances, that's true. But if you bought a book, you'd increase your chances even more.
Okay, anything else for Lorna?
Two books.
Yeah, two books. Uh, we'll move on to me. I did have a waste commission meeting two weeks ago and we went over the budget and there was some fine tuning on it and some number correction that had to be done. So it comes back on Wednesday, Wednesday night this week. And there was a big discussion on the recycling. They decided to take the number two plastic and the plastic to task. And so they decided that they would go through every bit of plastic that goes into every container, divide it off and calculate it out and did a whole thing. And probably at average year, it costs us about twenty-five thousand dollars to recycle plastic in that process. So they are not going to do that. They're going to probably most accurately at the moment, landfill it. So we will take the recycling in and unless it's something really obvious, the rest of it's gonna be just landfillled because it's just too expensive. Until something comes about to make it more economical, because there's just no place to, so you can store the plastic forever, but. So I think that was a decision that was being made is that.
It's the fuel for Masper.
It would be perfect fuel for Masper, which moves me right into the next one, which is Sewa, which was in Leffbridge. And I think I've been harping on it, the last two items that all that's left is the two studies, the land sighting and the geotech on the land sighting. We did apply for grants. The Alberta government is kind enough, they believe, I think we believe that they're really trying to get us online, you know, to to see what they can do for us. So they have appointed a person that's dealing directly with Sherry on how to apply for these grants. And they have a, I can't remember what they call, it's an elder rhythm that they have on a computer system. So when you apply for a grant, if you use these key words, it moves to a higher portion of the pot. So there's key words that you have to put in there. And the more you use those key words, the higher it goes into the category. So Sherry knows what the key words are.
Collaboration.
No, and there's, there's a lot of other ones, so that's other. But anyway, so if you want to know how to apply for a grant, talk to Sherry. Uh, she works at the county and and she she knows these key words that were told to her to, you know, if you could put them in every line, that would be her name, but it's it's all done by. would be her name. But it's all done by computer. You submit it.
Evaluation.
And it evaluates them, and then moves them into the queue, and then they pull off the ones at the top, and they like them, great, but if you don't have enough of those words in there, yours is still in the queue, it's just that you're...
A lot of the list.
Well, you could need potentially. So, yeah, that was something that was kind of neat. I went to an R&amp;R retention and doctor's retention, and of course, I'm sure everybody has heard that we're going to lose a doctor in January. There was a lady there, her name is Lisa, I don't know where she's from, I think she's originally from Australia, but I'm not sure what part of the world of Alberta she's, but she works for, she works for RPAP, which is the program for retention and hiring. And, but anyway, they've gotten about four doctors that have already applied for this, for this doctor's position. One has been a locum that's been here for quite a while, and so she's quite interested in caring, but they felt that they had to go through the whole process. Went to Mayor's Reeves, and the, it was fairly well-attended, and I don't have minutes off of it, but as soon as we get it, can't remember exactly, I was trying to think who the guest speaker was, and I sat in a better location this time, but I brought the papers in for Kim to, so I wanted to see on that. Oh, and going back to SEWA, there is, I brought in a confidential document that was done on the transportation study and the dumpster diving, and so if you want to look at it, you can read it, but you can't leave the facility. It's confidential, the information is not releaseable to the public yet. Moving on to, I did go to the hospital gala. It was, you know, it was, the numbers were nice, the group was excellent, meal was good, if you could eat it. I just, there's not much on the agenda, and we have the green stuff that I can eat. But, you know, it was, it was well-attended, or fairly decent attended, and I don't think that they raised the kind of money that they were hoping to, like, they...
They were only at about 80 or 90 on Wednesday or Thursday, so they really...
I think they had 235, is what they, but there was, there was a lot that didn't show up. But the nice thing about it, in a way, the group that was there were able to sing some really decent songs that people could dance to, so they had a bit of a dance floor. So it was kind of a different gala, but they did, like Lorna said, it was kind of a tribute to Donna for... The next one, I was at another SEWA meeting, and we had a group that came to talk, it was in Wieland County, about funding. And so there's two or three different groups that are coming right now to deal with funding. So on Wednesday, I got another meeting in Strathmore, Wieland County, on another group that's wanting to talk about funding. And Peter Dawson Lodge, I was at their, on the teleconference on that. Unfortunately, because of that teleconference, I missed the, they had a building committee meeting, but obviously, there hasn't been much going on on that, but they just wanted to bring us up to speed on what they're doing in light of not being on site. Went to Howard's funeral, and there was an appreciation for us for bringing in that bylaw about flags, the two flags that were lowered, and the flowers, so. Thank you to council on behalf. And then I was at the Remembrance Day service on Sunday. And, yeah, so that's about it. I've got six or eight meetings this week, but, so, minor.
Working is optional.
That's right. Any questions on any stuff that I...
Well, thank you for speaking on behalf of the town and the county. I gave a couple of them, a little bit of hack about that one.
I felt sorry for, because I don't know, Serena was asked to lay the reef, but she asked Jason if she had to do anything else, and he said no. You know, and this should be off the record, but, you know, the Legion has done this for 100 years, I believe, on Remembrance Day service, and sometimes it's really hard to, from year to year, to get the flow going. So it's kind of disappointing, because I think the county doesn't get an invitation as readily as we do. And I think part of the reason we do is because if I don't show up, they don't get sound.
And video, in this case.
Yeah. So anyway, but it was a well-attended event, so, which was really nice to see again. But, but anyway, I'm not much of a speech maker.
You did good.
I just have a few titles on my piece of paper, and then I kind of fill them in. And, but anyway, so next year coming around, maybe somebody else maybe should get an opportunity to participate too, so.
I hope the deputy mayor next year.
Oh, is that so?
March 1st, October 31st, so then it would be Laura.
I don't want to add it.
Well, Martin did a nice job.
He did, yes. Isn't it nice that he came over to ours? He could be in Brooks, he could be anywhere.
Yeah, and I think that, I think he does a great job of trying to spread himself around. And I'm sure that it's got to be a difficult task for him to...
It probably wouldn't be out of order just to send a note, thank you.
Well, I thought it was great. I visited with him before, I didn't get a chance to visit with him after, because we were cleaning up and putting stuff away, but I did visit with him before, thanked him for coming, but I didn't. But, yeah, it would be hard for us to probably, as a community, say thanks for attending. Anyway, anything else? If not, somebody wish to move council reports? George Lee? Any question on George Lee's motion? Here now, no one there. Okay, moving on to Kim's action list.
I think I finally have that gray dark enough that it shows up.
Yeah, it works good.
Makes it harder to read now. But, yeah, we must weigh through the list. Of course, we can't dispose of that one property until we get the land titles into our name, so that got delayed. And we're currently getting the regional ICSS agreement out for distribution. I've heard back from two of the other three municipalities that have already made the approvals, so. So that will go down, and the rest of the action list is complete.
Okay, any question on, now, okay, moving on to the admin.
CAO's report. Really, the highlights are the letters of support for Community Futures. That's in our policy. Anything that benefits our community, the CAO can approve the letter of report. If I question it at all, then I bring it to council for approval. And the ones, the one that Community Futures asked for was to support a women's conference, which will benefit the Bill of our community, so I got that straightforward, no financial implication to it, so that was a pretty easy one to get done. The, of course, we looked at the vehicle lease that I talked about already inside the budget, where we updated our security on our website through the county, something that we also have to work on doing through tourism. That site isn't as secure as we would like it to be, so we're going to fix that. Provided the new councillors with the ICS 100 training. I've got one certificate emailed to me, it's riveting information, so I hope that you guys can get that one done before the January 9th, 10th, Arrowhead will be hosting it, so for the rest of council, I've held spots for you if you like.
Isn't that just online?
200?
200 is available online, but the 200 is not recognized in Alberta, so you have to take it proctored through this, so.
So it has to be through, it's the Arrowhead, and it's, okay.
Yeah, and really, 200 is probably as high as council will ever go, so I don't cover you.
So if you knew, perhaps, that you wouldn't be here on the 24th, the January?
Yeah.
How do you, can you take it online?
Well, but it's not recognized.
The 200 is not recognized.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Now, they do hold them all over southern Alberta all the time, so this one was local, and Christopher, Christopher Grogge grant funding to put it together, so I, he mentioned that there was a place available if we brought her on for the kind of thing, and I said, well, maybe if we contributed to lunch, we could have a spot for our councillors and myself, but he said yes, so he's holding the spots.
It's good. Who's taken that 100?
Or not taken yet, sorry. I was going to look at it, that's why I was a little bit confused, like, I thought I went and looked at it, and it's...
Look into it really close, the 100 online is recognized, the 200 online is not recognized.
Okay, sorry, that's why I was kind of getting confused. I'm like, well, I went through it, already looked, I haven't really done it, but looked at it, and I'm like, and it looks...
How long did it take you, Laura? Two hours?
Yeah.
Say four to the camera.
Four. Well, it was, it was good. I, yeah, I made some silly mistakes on the test, but I still...
You're 70%.
Okay.
So anyway, we've got, I've got that all arranged for, and if you can't make it, just let me know, and I'll make sure. Tom, I didn't get a spot for you.
What?
I should go.
I would like to go.
Would you like to go?
Yeah. I've got my 400 for those that know...
Tom's on the week-long training.
But yet, it is, doesn't hurt.
You can have more, more of a spot.
A good refresher?
It is a great refresher, and it definitely doesn't hurt, because like, the 400 was way out there. Like, they might be using it for the level 400 for the California fires right now, they might be, but they didn't use it for the 400 level for the format of the fires. So, again, it's quite a, you know, area to take it, unless you want to make a career out of it, maybe.
I, as I mentioned earlier in the budget portion, looking at, HTS is coming to look at some phone, and security system updates here at the building. We also assisted the Chamber of Commerce help with one of their executive meetings in the council chambers, because it's available through policy. I don't know if they're going to continue doing it. It is, I don't know how it worked out for it, but they said they touched base, let me know if they're going to continue. The pool project management meeting, not to give too much away, but we're going to want councils to put on a couple issues that got brought up readily, that, so make sure everybody can come to that meeting. It's, sorry, George Lee, it's the only date it was available. I can make you apologize.
It's at 6, isn't it?
It's at 6 o'clock, yes.
And the other meeting was at?
4:30.
Or 4:50?
That one, the county called, same thing, I was in Edmonton, asked if I could arrange it. Thank you, Karen. So, did that through. I've reviewed the community service manager's job description and responsibilities, and we're trying to draw on the strengths and refine that position a little bit differently before we get the staff back in the tourism center. And then I have the formal meetings. We had the IAM VP meeting, and the draft is just about ready to go, so we're gonna, they're doing the final draft, bringing it back to council, and then we'll take it to an open house jointly with the county, that technical project management, we have the kickoff there. Again, some more information. We'll wait till everybody's in the same room to bring the information forward. And the certification advisory committee, I was in Edmonton for two days. And that's my report.
Okay, any questions for Kim? Here now, we'll move on to the development officers.
I know you all had a chance to read the report. One of the things was the designation of the heritage site to change to hardboard. Really, what we do, the town is designated as a heritage site, and really, the province lets us put it on their website and identifies what makes it a heritage site. So the siding being one of those things that's identified as heritage, they kind of question, what does it lose if it is changed? Because structurally, if they, so, so they're kind of looking into that, and what do we lose? So if they decided to go with a hardboard, I think they would put it to the heritage advisory board that we have, which contains members of the town, the county, the villages. So there may be a question of that, just depending on what the votes look like when we come back to do the site.
Essence, Laurie.
Did you?
No.
Oh, you should. Oh, the Historical Society is going to review it.
This recent year.
Yeah. So that's what came out of the meeting that you requested she attend.
Okay, any others?
It's pretty straightforward.
Colin, Simon. Okay, here now, we'll move on to the public works.
The door is in the library.
The door which?
The door they were waiting on, the library is in.
Oh, it's in. Like, it's in, physically in?
It's actually, yeah, physically installed.
Yeah, well, it's just that it's been a, you know, a tough go, because they haven't been able to get exactly what was needed, so.
Well, he kept asking me, and probably Laura as well, do we pay part of the bill? No. Making sweat.
There was a conversation about how they would like to wait as long to get paid as we waited for the doors. I think it was a serious conversation, but, you know.
Obviously, some of them haven't sued yet.
Yeah.
For that delay.
But that took a long time.
It was painful.
I see this guy put that in the paper, thanking administration and the public works for their support while they were doing the demo.
He spent a lot of time in our community that he didn't think that he was going to, so.
Well, it's kind of nice to see a person kind of held up his end of the bargain, even though the bargain wasn't as good for him as what it could have been, because they never anticipated the...
Concrete being as thick as it was, he took a job that he thought he was going to be able to complete in three days, and it took almost two months. And he stuck by his price and showed up for work every day.
Now, I mean, the town did a system, which is great, because it, you know, definitely was pleasant, but I tell you, I was really impressed that...
He donated, so he contracted us at $18,000 to do the work, and he donated that much work, so we gave him a tax receipt for the other, but he donated. So he did a public thank you for that.
Yeah, and I thought it was good.
And the public works helped him out a bunch with a bunch of little things, so.
And you get a nice job.
Well, it really does clean the site up, and, you know, hopefully, in the cement that's there, hopefully, they can build a garage on it and store their chemicals on site, inside, so. Any other questions on Stu's? Here now, we'll move on to the community services manager.
See at the end, she does have a note about tourism, and we have had some sales. We put a note on the door for anybody from out of town that is come, that during the hours that we're here, we'll put out the doors, so that we're not leaving people standing at the front doors.
We've had people in the store a few times asking them iPhones.
Yeah, we accommodate them where we can. It hasn't been overwhelming by any means by the time.
Almost $2,000, so.
We've helped all where we can.
Okay, any questions on Bonnie's talk? Okay, moving on to the CPOs.
Great mention that he's now received the new mounting brackets, so he's going to be able to flip the signs around a little bit more readily, so he doesn't actually have to take the mounting brackets down, he can just swap the sign itself. And we have the batteries, so that...
And we have the batteries so that, so that they don't have to be brought back overnight to charge.
How is he finding the digital signs working?
The awareness is, is good. He, on the other side of it, is, in certain areas, you can see the exceed, exceed the speed over the posted limit during prescribed times. He should call tickets. There's, he did a fairly good educational push on that, didn't seem to have too much of effect. So he went to get some tickets and has noticed the numbers.
The reason I've asked, I'm just wondering if for his capital budget, whether he should think about another set of signs? So he could move them around, because we've got the pool, we've got in front of the school there, we've got the...
Right now, because of the temporary nature of the ones on the five thirty-four, it's way cheaper to buy brackets as opposed to the signs, so. So right now, he's looking at, and then mounting the other set of brackets, and then he's going to work with Stu to do more of a portable stand. So basically, a way that we can move the signs to any block in town. One area that he talked about was Long Memorial. This was an area that I'm concerned.
Okay, any other comments, questions for Greg's? Moving on to the fire department.
I've been meaning to ask this question for, since we started seeing these. So first response, no EMS from Vulcan, does that mean just like, just the fire department went and there's no ambulance? Is that what that means?
Means that, yeah, they went, tell the ambulance, ambulance get it there. Because there wasn't one available.
Quite possibly it was other times when it wasn't a call and there was no ambulance available. I don't know if it's getting better or not now.
Is nine typical for, like, not having an ambulance in Bay, Bayonne Town? Is it seeing kind of high in terms of their pre-dis分布?
That's the...
Is that a higher?
Yeah, we have had high numbers before, but that... We were tracking it and we had better numbers before. Yeah, it's, it's, it's high, but we've been the high before.
Is that typically just like a staffing thing or...
An ambulance. It's an HS.
Yeah, you know, there, every municipality always has concerns about those numbers with HS. But HS, they, they move their ambulances around to where they believe that the majority of the calls are, so. That's not to say on those nine first responses that they weren't doing a transfer, you know, or on an emergency of somewhere else. But there is, well, I guess it's nine, it's eleven, because there's two rules in two towns. But there is a good chance that they were flexing, and it's the flexing ones that bothers me. And what happens on a flex is that if an ambulance leaves High River, they pull the one out of Nanton. And then if they need one from somewhere else, they'll pull Vulcan to ambulance to partway between Nanton and Vulcan, so it'll sit on a corner there. And it just sits there and waits. So if there's a call, which makes sense, they'll go either east or west. The part that bothers me the most really is when it has to go east to Lomond, because they don't flex anybody over in Lomond from anywhere. If there's nothing in Vulcan, they might have to come out of, they don't bring Travers up or Brooks over or anybody else closer to Lomond. So those people on the Lomond country pay the price, in my opinion. Like, the Lomond model was, I mean, I mean, if they're out west of town and there's a call at Brant, I mean, they're fifteen minutes closer to Brant than they would have been if they were in Vulcan, so. So flexing is a concern to me.
Is it common regional issue?
Everything for the rules. Again, you know, it's just more or less what this gentleman here is, we live in the fridge. We are the forgotten child.
HS has done presentations all over. And they're almost, it's probably due for them to do one that says the communications meeting more. And they, Arrowhead is another good one, they really, they really, they, they have different times that they have to respond to different areas, and they say that they respond well in our areas, so their system is working. Some people don't agree with them. And have, and have told them, at the last communications meeting, they took, there was a lot of criticism of the system, but they did, they didn't change anything.
It's a tough one, because of the numbers, you know. But the thing that bothers someone like me, that was sat there and were promised that we wouldn't see a change in our system and service, and, which is a bull-faced lie. I mean, I have no problem saying that publicly and not have to make a retraction on that one, that we have seen a reduction in service, because we had two ambulances, full-time crew and a part-time crew backup, twenty-four seven. We don't have that now. So, when we looked after it ourselves, so, you know, I have no problems admitting that one. But unfortunately, you know, they, they go with numbers, and again, we're the forgotten child. We are. And, and happens with just whatever organization that we belong to. It, if you don't do it in-house or your own, quite often, you know, the partnering is a great collaboration, but the city of Calgary, you know, still does different things than we do, but... But anyway, and then the bad thing about the, the first response is it comes out of our budget, you know, something that we pay for as municipalities, you know, because we're paying for it, and then we're also paying as a provincial taxpayer to the HS. So that's where, you know, a lot of rules get, have to double dip. But yet, there isn't a municipality out there that, that's rural, especially, that hasn't felt it.
There has been talk about the fire department's tracking and billing for their time. That's, it really hasn't gained a lot of traction. A lot of people have put a lot of...
And the bad thing about that, though, is instead of, you know, is, it's our residences that would suffer, because, you know, those nine would at least have somebody show up, do assessments, you know, do, you know, all that pre-stuff, so that when the ambulance gets there, it should speed up their process and, you know. And so if we said, no, we're not interested in doing first response in our community, that really affects the level of care of our residents, that's for sure.
We had an incident at the store a couple weeks ago, and the week ago, two weeks ago, and the fire department actually started the IV and everything.
Oh, yeah.
That lady that set the store.
Yeah. Yeah, and they have some very well-trained people, and they even have one of the EMS fellows that's on the fire department that's paramedic. And, and the government has allowed them to do within their scope of practice, you know, do certain things. And so if they're an EMT or paramedic or EMR, they can do up to that scope of practice. But it, but it is a cost to municipalities, and, you know, you can notice, like you said, and the reason why Vulcan would have nine and the rural might have only two, potentially, is that we do have extended care at Peter Dawson Lodge, and especially Peter Dawson Lodge. Extended care, they, they never used to go to as much, because they have a nurse on. But, but sometimes you end up even, they wouldn't even be called to, to the hospital to assist. You know, they don't do medical drivers as much as they used to, because HS changed their policy, but... But anyway, any other questions on the Peter's report? Okay, hearing none, somebody wish to move her filed administration reports? Laura? Thank you, Laura. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, moving on to the final. Michelle, Louis German. Any question on Michelle's motion? Hearing none, all in favor?